I live right over here in the Dr. Pointe County. And thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thank you for giving me this opportunity, because I have two different proposals.
Pickleball courts in Walker. So while you're viewing this short video of pickleball, I just want to tell you a little bit about the game. Pickleball is a paddle sport created for all ages and skill levels. The rules are simple and the game is easy for players to learn and enjoy, and the learning curve is very short. Pickleball combines many of the elements of tennis, badminton, and ping pong. In fact, sometimes you just kind of feel like you're standing on top of a ping pong table, you know? But you can play indoors, outdoors, on a badminton-sized court, and a slightly modified tennis net. Played with a paddle and plastic ball with holes, you can play doubles or singles. People who have never held a paddle or racket of any sort in their hand can develop enough skill to have a good time. While the support has exploded in popularity, the construction of venue of the venues has yet to catch up. It's hard to find facilities that are 100% pickleball. Now about the growth of pickleball. The Sports and Fitness Industry Association reported that pickleball currently has 3.1 million players in the United States. The Grand Rapids Pickleball Club, a group of enthusiastic players, currently has 610 members. They maintain 15 permanent outdoor courts at Belknap Park, and they hosted the Meyer State Games of Michigan, a USAPA sanctioned event, and the first annual Grand Rapids Beer City Open Pickleball Championship, which was a lot of fun. As you can see in this diagram, a pickleball court is much smaller than a tennis court. It's about one-third the size. Four pickleball courts can fit on one tennis court when you use the out-of-bound zones. The two areas that I'd like to talk about tonight that could possibly become pickleball courts for our community are at the following locations: City Central Park Tennis Courts, right here behind City Hall and the Maintenance Building, and the unused tennis courts behind Central Elementary. The existing tennis courts behind the city maintenance area could be converted to accommodate four permanent pickleball courts by removing one tennis court. You could have them in the center or on either end. In your packet, you were provided with a quote for a net tension system, and since we got that quote on how much it would cost to convert the courts from tennis to pickleball, I was made aware of another system for installing nets, and this is what Belknap Park used. And the first option that you have the quote on was, they proposed to cut out a large square of concrete out of the court, and then they pour footings in to set the posts. And the second option that they use at Belknap would be, they core post holes, they set in a PVC sleeve, and then they cut the sleeve down to be flush with the court. And then you put your post in, and it can be removed, so it could be stored away from the winter elements, and it's ends up being only about $800 per court, as to, I think the other was closer to, I don't know, $1,000 or something. I can't remember offhand, I didn't write it down. But anyway, that would be a less expensive way to do it. Option two is holding up very well over at Belknap Park, and this would also allow the park department, or I said that, they could store it away from the elements. So, let's go on. The space has built-in wind barriers with that cement wall behind the maintenance area on the south side, and they have trees to the west and to the north, and that location also is close to a bathroom facility and a drinking fountain. Okay. Now, the other area I'm talking about is the tennis courts behind Central Elementary School. They border the north side of City Central Park. In my opinion, these unused courts would be the perfect space to establish six or more designated pickleball courts without altering the city's current playable tennis areas. It's my understanding that the land is owned by the Kenwood Hills Public Schools, and this is the city has the option of leasing it for a dollar a year. This space already has parking, some fencing, and a cement lab slab. These pickleball courts would fit in perfectly to the Central Park collaboration that the city and school district currently enjoy. If a joint project were adopted, Kenwood Hills Public Schools could use the courts to teach pickleball in their physical education program, and the community would enjoy another aspect of what the park already has to offer. In conclusion, the sport of pickleball in the city of Walker would allow another opportunity for its citizens to stay active while building a strong community bond between our residents. Thank you for the opportunity to share my passion, our passion, for pickleball and the dream for the community.
Thank you, Suzanne.
You're welcome.
I'll just start off and just say, thank you for coming out tonight. Really appreciate your enthusiasm. It's not too often that we get somebody who's an advocate that brings along a crowd of people that will also advocate for it. That actually means a lot, so we thank and appreciate you for coming out. I thought I'd just like, maybe just open it up to the commission for any comments or questions that they might have, but also recognize that we will basically take your presentation upon advisement, and there are a number of other stakeholders that we have to talk to about what could work, both internally from the Recreation Department, coordination with Kenwood Hills Schools, and then certainly when it comes towards budget time as the new year rolls around, that'll have to be incorporated with that if the decision is made to move forward. But again, appreciate your enthusiasm, and thanks for coming out, and glad to see so many great supporters here for it. And by the way, I told you too, that my family's played it for years, and we love it too, so... Comments or questions from anyone?
Suzanne, I did pass out that other paper. Did you want to explain that to them? The other proposal?
I think she covered it.
Did you? Okay. I did give them all that, okay.
Mr. Carey?
Yeah, I think I'm very much in favor of it. One, that we definitely have support behind it from the group, and I think there's, when you look at the ROI from the health and wellness aspect of it, and the fact that we're getting them out in the community, yes, there's an expense that we're bearing to make, you know, to bring this up to where they're usable courts, but that's a return on that investment because it's the health and wellbeing of our community, and it doesn't look like it's just a small little group either. It looks like it's a good-sized group, so, and I'm sure that there's a lot more. So definitely in favor of it, and I think, you know, even in the Times and walking the dogs and stuff through the park, I don't see the tennis courts used as much, and it's not that they're not being used, it's, I just don't see the activity there, and if this were something that definitely, from my perspective, would increase the utilization of it, and, you know, it's, you know, the investment is not too significant, I'm without a doubt a strong fan of it.
Yeah, it seems like a reasonable amount to, like you said, the return on the investment is really significant, but would there be an opportunity to collaborate, like with Spectrum Health, or to go for sponsors to, you know, to help with offset some of the expense?
I think I introduced myself to all of you. I'm Linda Jeros, I'm on the Grand Rapids Pickleball Board. I've been involved with pickleball in Grand Rapids since we started out with two courts and maybe 30 people, and it was all gray-haired people, and now the sport has just exploded. We have 15 courts at Belknap, and we have people anywhere, I think our youngest member is like 11-years-old up till their 80s, so it's a very good community builder for the whole community. But in answer to your question, we have reached out to those. We do like a donor program up at Belknap. I don't know, have you maybe been up to Belknap, to the courts there by Griff's Ice House? We have a banner program, so if somebody donates $500, they get a banner up at Belknap. It's, I think it's four by six, and it's up there for two years. And they're mentioned on our Facebook page and on our website, and we have specialty fencers, you know, asked if they want to hand out discount coupons. We have restaurants, pickleball companies, bars, all kinds of people who have jumped on board with that. So within your community, there's probably people here who have a business who would be interested in buying a banner to promote it, be it, you know, a chiropractor, an eye doctor, you know, somebody else. We have physical therapists, people like that who jump right on board, and then they renew year after year. That's kind of what we can do, and I can help you, you know, through any of this, because I've been in the back or the front part of all of it. So, yeah, especially, you know, like with microbreweries and all that, not only does it bring people to your community, but it brings money to your community, because pickleball people are really social people. So after you play, they like to go out for a drink, or out to eat, those type of things. Plus, one other really cool thing I have to tell you about, we did at Belknap this summer, which is something that you could incorporate. We started, we kind of adopted the neighborhood around us, so for the, is it north and food pantry? We donated to that community food, or money, or toiletries, to give back. We really believe in giving back to the community where pickleball is. Granted, you know, that didn't start when we first started, but it's something in the community that we really recognize on the use. So, part of it, you know, I always tell people pickleball is the most, the beauty is the friendships and the community that we can help others. That's really what I love about it.
Thank you.
Did that help?
Yes, very impressive, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'd just like to share that the ability to play something as you get older was a real bonus for me. I liked, I loved moving, and I just couldn't find something that was a fit for me, but once I started pickleball, you can play at your own level with people that are your level, or you can try to progress, but it was a very good thing for me, and I helped, I think, for pickleball.
I run a ladder league over at MSA Fieldhouse, which is behind the Meyer Cascade Myers, and Thursday comes up over to April, and we, they have basketball courts, and on each basketball court you can get three pickleball courts, so they tape off lines. And last year, when I ran the league, we had about 80 ladies that wanted to play. Couldn't fit them all on the courts. But this year, I have 120 men and women that want to play for 60 spots. So, you know, it's, it's run by invitation each week, they get invitations, so first come, first served gets to play, but the interest in one year that we have is just phenomenal.
Carol Schultz kind of started that Tuesday morning.
Yeah, we do a Tuesday, Thursday ladies' play, and we have had up to 50 people on one day, and we don't have that many courts, so we have developed a plan where you take turns and rotate in, and everybody gets to play, and it's a good place for us just to have a bunch of women, and you show up if you want to, and so that's, that's really grown too.
Yeah, that, forty, fifty. How many, when you and Kathy started that, there was...
Oh, maybe 25, 25.
Yeah. And what Suzanne now has done is taken that same group of women and brought them indoors in the winter, so they still have met all these people, all these friends, and then they come and play indoors in the winter, then as the weather gets nice, they go back outside to Belknap.
And the other thing with pickleball, because I played in Denver, where my daughter lives, and I've played in Florida, where my father plays, who is 86, and he started it two years ago, he started to play, when he decided he couldn't go off five days a week. But anyway, the rules of how to share the courts seem to just be the same everywhere. You know, it's, people show up to the court, and if four people are playing, and two people are sitting out, then the game finishes, and, you know, maybe the winners stay on, and the losers go off, and these two new people come on, and it's just amazing how the courtesy, I guess, of playing and not hogging a court is, it's just kind of universal in that way.
The other beauty of this sport is that you can show up by yourself, you don't have to reserve a court. In tennis, you have to reserve court time, but pickleball, if you just want to play, you can just show up and work yourself right into some games.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
I see it's on tennis courts, so, you know, I was thinking, up in the UP, they have areas, we'll say, it's inside of a pole barn, I see, they had basketball courts, but for winter, they flood that, and there's different colors, and these are different colors. So then you could play hockey on it in the winter, and I'm just curious, as, could these still be used as a tennis court? And so if somebody comes along and wants to play tennis, hey, you're going to have a little different color here and there, but I don't know how it'd be to play tennis on that.
I think it's a way that they stripe it.
But do...
We already have that.
Right.
And on one of the tennis courts right here behind City Hall, you have lines for one pickleball court on one tennis court, and the net is different. What my husband and I have done is, we bring a bungee court, and we lower the net in the center, so it's a little bit more regulation, but it's, I guess what I'm proposing is to have designated pickleball courts on their own, so that when you come up, the nets are there and ready. You know, the, the area is marked off just, you're not competing against all these lines
Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I mean, it is possible, because that's what the city has done, has taken that step to do that.
The other beauty of dedicated pickleball courts is that sometimes they're individually fenced in, so as we get older, we don't have to chase the ball so far, so you can do the ball, most of the time, as it goes over the fence, stays within your playing line, but if you have a tennis court, they can just put lines on, then you're chasing the ball.
I did bring some fencing quotes with me, and I'll leave it with you, it's, I have a display board, and fencing quotes came in late, later than when I needed to have everything printed for you guys, so I'll leave that with you, the display board, it's out in the hallway as you come in.
Yeah, there's a company, are those the court people? But they're the people to go to if you decide to go forward with this, because this is their niche, their specialty, they can tell you what, well, that's where the quote is from, what you need to, how much it's going to cost, what the best paint is, and, you know, all of those things. All of that background work is done. All you guys need to do is say yes and say, here's a check.
Okay.
I'd like to see it move forward, so...
Yeah, good. I think that will, I think we'll, I think everyone sees it as favorable, we'll take it under advisement, like I said, it'll have to be coordinated with our Recreation Department, Kenwood Hills, budget, things like that, but I see no negatives from anybody here tonight, so, thanks for coming in, appreciate it. All right, the next item we have in our committee, the whole discussion, is this Police Department memo regarding the decommissioned police cruiser.
Greg's not learning about pickleball.
And Greg's joining a pickleball team over there.
Can I just come up and grant a little...
Sure.
We're firmly in the pickleball challenge right now. Police gets fired.
We know who wins.
It was a lot of fun, we did that demonstration.
Mm-hmm. No, I love it, it's good. Thanks for coming out.
Thanks.
You have four minutes.
Four minutes?
Just these votes, but we'll keep those.
Oh, yep.
Thank you. You lost your crowd, you lost your audience.
Come back in, we need to hear, we need to talk. So, did you distribute the memo?
Yep, the memo is in the...
Okay. So the history is, as you know, we decommissioned our last Crown Victoria police cruiser, so that's the sedan, and with that, of course, we realized very quickly that all the components, all the equipment, and the interior lights, radio system, modules, all that stuff, is no longer compatible with the Tahoe's. Even with the old Tahos to the new Tahos, we're finding out there's some different nuances within each one, but the Crown Vic, fully loaded, has no compatibility with the new cruisers that are, that we are going to. So, the thought was, in conversation with city manager, was, I was going to put it out first to see if there's any agencies within the state, maybe a smaller agency that could use a cruiser in their fleet, so we put out a posting on the chief's list, sir, for the entire state of Michigan, to see if anybody had any interest, and I got one responsive interest from a small agency down in the Detroit area, and speaking with the chief there, he said, well, I'm going to come up and take a look at it, and then we formulated the bid process per city policy, and I explained that to him, that if he wanted to place a bid, he could do that. I never heard back from him, so I'm assuming that means he's no longer interested. So we ran into the scenario now, where, what do we do with this car, and then more importantly, not so much the car, but what do we do with all the components of the car, because they're of no use to us, and quite honestly, no use to any other agencies, because Crown Victorias are no longer in business, or the Ford Motors no longer making those models. So the idea came up, or the issue came up in speaking with Mark Koning and Alex Jancheski, was that it's going to be more laborious to tear that car down, and then have to discard all that equipment and the components of the car, which basically amounts to junk when it's all sudden done, and then try to send that car to auction as it's stripped down, because we're not going to send it to auction with the components in it. We are partnered with a lot of different educational organizations, one of which is the Kent Career Tech Center's Criminal Justice Program. We are very active in their program there, and to give you a little history, it's, as the memo says, it's all school districts within Kent County, and they currently have 150 students in that program. They run two different programs, or two different classes, and they have 150 total students from all of Kent County. In that, basically what it is, it's a little mini-academy. It's a police academy where students that are high school juniors and seniors that are interested in criminal justice have an opportunity to come and experience what, you know, police and law enforcement, corrections, probation, parole, is all about. So, historically, police agencies that have had equipment that they've decommissioned have made donations to this organization. We've, we've donated quite a few things over the years. We've donated our expired PBTs, our shields, our riot shields, and we replace those, and so they repurpose a lot of the equipment that police agencies are no longer using, one of which, the greatest need is cruisers, because they go out and practice traffic stops, they go out and practice contacts with people in a mobile environment, and as such, we came up with the idea that it might be wise to make that donation to that, that Career Center with a cruiser that's in pretty good condition right now. They operate with two of them. One of them's an old Chevy Impala, the old bathtub-style one, I think it was like the early 90s that they're still using, that you can see through the floorboards on, so they're looking for any help they can get. So, the consensus that we had between myself and the DPW was, let's get permission and approval to donate that cruiser as-is loaded. The markings are off it, it is no longer identified as Walker Police, it's just a plain cruiser, but it still has all the components of a police cruiser in it, including the cage, the lights, the siren, the radio, all equipment that we would no longer utilize. So I guess that's, that's what the proposal is and the request is, is to go ahead and make that donation to the Career Center, and part of the caveat, of course, is that, you know, the conditions of that donation includes, it can only be used for training purposes for that, for that school, cannot be brought onto the public roadway, or used for any other purposes other than training of these high school students that are interested in criminal justice. Mark Heisen, or Mark, Mark Heisen, yeah. Mark Koning's on board with it. Alex Jancheski, the garage foreman, certainly supports that, because it's a lot less labor hours for him. So, that is the request we're making on behalf of both of our departments.
Commissioners, any comments or questions?
I think it's a great idea.
You know, we, I think I'd read someplace in the packet, where I think the estimated value we could give is maybe 2,000, 2,500, and I weigh that out with the amount of time we'd have to take still to put that up for the auction, in removing, you know, other things out of there. The amount that we're going to get, the, it's not the cause that it's going to so much as it is the profession, and it's, those are future officers for us potentially, so I think it's, it's a great utilization for relatively low costs to us.
Yeah, it's not precedent-setting. I remember quite a number of years ago, we donated one to, I think it was Sand Lake, or a smaller community. I had one question about maintaining the brand on there, and you said, you noted that you took that off there, but I'm wondering if there's some way that we could have a letter down there that is donated by the city of Walker, because I think it'd really be good for us to show that we're community, we're part of the community, it's a nice way to show things for potential future officers, and that's my only comment that...
I like that idea.
I'm actually fully supportive of this, but I just think that'd be kind of cool to do that.
Create something for that.
Our sign shop folks could probably build something together to put on there, and it doesn't have to be obnoxious, but just a, a nice recognition.
Give me some for the drivers, passenger side doors.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like a courtesy notification, overt, you know?
When they get done with it, they might not, they'd say, I see why they donated.
Ninety-seven thousand miles.
It's actually pretty good shape for the most, it's just...
No, I mean...
It's closing in at 100,000 miles, which is, for a sedan, that's what we, that's been the norm, we've been running those about 100,000, so it's about ready to be decommissioned, so, nothing serious.
After some of the training exercises, they might look at it and go, whoa.
Luckily, they don't do any high-speed stuff. It's all controlled traffic stops and, you know, running, nothing high-speed at all out there.
Sarah, do you want a motion or anything on that? Probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us to have an authorization that way.
Do we have to make that motion?
I'll support.
Supported by Deshane. Any other discussion? If not all in favor, please say aye. Same sign. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work, like the idea. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It is officially seven o'clock, and I'd like to start our meeting off, and if we could have Commissioner Gruders start with the invocation, if you would, please.
All right, please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we give you, give us the imagination to dream and catch glimpses of the life you intend for us to live. Show us how our individual lives are intertwined with those around us, and help us to live together so that we can exemplify your good news to our community. Thank you that we can gather tonight to work on behalf of our residents, and thank you for all the work we were able to accomplish this evening. We ask that you guide our conversations and give us understanding as we work together to make decisions for the good of everyone in this community. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
May I ask you to rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we have the clerk call the roll, please.
Mayor Heisinga.
Present.
Commissioner Kent.
Present.
Commissioner Carey.
Present.
Commissioner Deshane.
Present.
And Commissioner Gruders.
Present.
Thank you.
And if we could get a motion to excuse both Commissioners Gilbert and Commissioner Holland from this evening's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Holland, in support by Kent. Any discussion? If not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries, thank you. Next item is public comment. This is public comment for any item that is on the agenda this evening. If you'd like to have anything to say, you can say it right now. Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda. We had three items. The commission meeting minutes from 10/8/18, expenditures, $4,465,306.28, and the Police Department memo, which we just discussed. Look for a motion to support our... Look for a motion to support our consent agenda.
Make that motion.
Motion by Carey.
I'll support.
Supported by Deshane. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is resolutions. The first one is 18-491. This is Subplan 5, Future Land Use Plan. I assume this is, Mr. Power?
Quick my way through this discussion. So, you folks had the format of a similar review exercise a couple of weeks ago with Frank's discussion of the Northridge, Northridge West Subarea 1A Future Land Use Plan. We're going to jump over to a different part of town, and there's a slightly different scope of this, this review. So, Frank may have given you a rundown. He usually does a really good job of kind of centering everybody on what this subplanning process is all about. Walker is composed of a lot of neighborhoods. Some require some very specialized focus. So, over the years, since our last comprehensive master plan update in 98, we've looked at specific focus areas within the community or subplan, subareas, to address specific concerns. We were developing Northridge West Subarea a week ago, and one of the big items there is the transition of land use towards 4 Mile. Another issue there was the connection of Northridge Drive. Similarly, on what we're going to go over here, and just a few slides I have tonight, is the connectivity issue related to Subarea 5. So, this is a part of Walker that we never previously defined as a subarea or as a neighborhood, really. So, there is an area that has seen a lot of change in the last 20 years, especially in the last few years, that warrants special focus and a special focus, especially on connectivity of the road network. So, many of you were in the public meetings earlier this year, starting in February all the way through till June. The planning commission's meeting was in September, when they made a recommendation on what I'm talking about to you right now. This, this process has risen as a result of a lot of discussion about what do we do about Klute Street? There's a changing trend of development. There seem to be changing needs, and there is no traction behind the original idea that Klute Street itself serves as the appropriate bypass for kind of this interstate truck system that you see to the north on I-96. So, what do we do this, with this area? How do we make sure the land uses still make sense and that there is a connected road network that can be patched together over time as property develops? And this was kind of on the heels of the Tric Mine being done with their sand mining operation that began in the mid-1990s and went through the early '00s. That's what this decade is about. And the transition of that site into a variety of other land uses, and most recently, the interest in Betts Industries, a major operation in this area, wanting to expand out to the west. So, the door had been kind of closing on this former Klute Street connection. So, that's the backdrop of why we wanted to focus on this area. The reason for that connectivity, of course, is to make sure that there's a fluid route for industrial traffic to get out towards I-96. Particularly given the fact that at Panel Street and Alpine, there's a pretty major pinch point, a lot of delays and turns on Alpine Street. So, that's enough of the background context. When we got into our review a little bit more deeply, we focused on three, what I'm calling focus elements. The term has kind of a different scope from what we looked at as a focus element in the Northridge West area. These are three fairly small areas. The center one, a little bigger than the other two. Where we looked at a set of specific improvements rather than really drilling down on land use change to make sure that these transportation goals can be met. So, the first one we looked at, and this slide shows you kind of where we looked and the results of what we looked at. So, the first one is the Coopersville-Marin Railroad Bridge over Walker Avenue. The takeaway here was that the best long-term solution is to work on a project that brings that crossing down to grade. And we've already gotten through a couple of the hoops in the grant application process to MDOT. There's a Transportation Economic Development Fund grant that has been successfully applied for, and we've gotten buy-in from the railroad now, and the grant is in process. So, that's really all of the review and all the recommendations in one. We are working on an at-grade crossing for that railroad bridge, which will improve the flow of traffic, improve the line of sight for users on that roadway. The second focus area is a little bit more complicated. This is Panel and Alpine, which we do not have jurisdiction over, of course. So, what do we do with that intersection? Well, there's no easy answer. There are a few different options that we can look at recommending to the city of Grand Rapids, and of course, working towards partnering with them on potential solutions down the road. And just keeping in mind, this is a 20-year plan that we can update every few years, but it is a 20-year plan, so we have to look at the long horizon on the one hand. But on the other hand, there are potential short-term solutions that we looked at. So, we talked about coordinating signals with Panel and, Panel and Ann Street being one of the potential solutions here. And of course, that as a recommendation to the city of Grand Rapids. We also looked at potentially realigning a couple of the roads, which would be longer-term solutions that involve understanding the properties you're dealing with a little bit more, you know, understanding that better with some of the environmental legacy and land acquisition. That would be a pretty complicated process. The third focus element is a more expansive area, and this is where we see the redevelopment of the Tric Mine site as Betts has taken over this property. So, here we focused more on kind of patching together that connectivity of the road network and making sure the land uses on this site make sense in their context. So, here you see that the planning commission was certainly still interested in finding ways to connect a truck route out to Walker Avenue. There's a old right-of-way of what was called Stayhour Street on the kind of south end of this area, and actually, an old rail bed that's shown as option one. A alignment that would bring, continue the line of Panel Street along the railroad on the north end of the site, at the right side of this screen, as option two. Both of those options have a lot of challenges. There are pretty major public utilities on the south end. You're getting pretty close to the Indian Mill Creek, and you're in some wetlands. And then on the north end, you're getting into some pretty steep grade and some pretty unstable soils due to all the mining that's happening. So, we want to be careful about this and just make sure that we are showing that there are ways to potentially patch together connections over time as other, other property in this area develops. What you see on this screen is either built now or likely to be built based on approved plans that we have in place. And then there's still, of course, developable land on the Betts site. This isn't really to scale, but it shows you basically what, what is likely to happen there. Looking at that a little bit more closely, as the Betts site continues to develop, if it continues to develop, we want to make sure that what they do there or whatever they sell their outlets to turns into something sensible from an access management standpoint and from a standpoint of the neighbors across the street, having a good land use interface with what's happening on this site, so that you don't have a bunch of driveway cuts, a bunch of truck headlights, and a bunch of truck turning movements onto Walker Avenue. You want to have this internal road network on the site. And I said this was the most expansive area that we focused on, so this also carries over into the Bristol Road intersection with the railroad. So, keeping an open mind here, this is a difficult spot where a lot of people have trouble navigating. And on the one hand, it's kind of a pinch point. There's, you know, it's not easy to cross onto that bridge, and it takes a lot of getting used to, including for me, to get the flow of traffic down where you have to wait your turn onto the bridge. So, there is interest in widening that in a way that still dissuades truck traffic from going north into the neighborhoods, which is a big challenge. So, the idea here would be, let's keep options open for looking at at-grade crossings here as well, if the funding makes sense somewhere down the road or other ideas, if there's a design standard that can make sense. But also, keeping in mind, we want to keep truck traffic off of northbound Bristol. So, those are just some of the site-specific design recommendations that the planning commission and staff and the public worked through. Really, what separates this subplan from the Northridge West Subplan is that there is not a lot of new discussion of land use in terms of future land use. The land use fabric of this area makes sense for industrial, continuing industrial, all the way along Panel to Walker Avenue. It's not a place that makes a lot of sense to bring commercial, and in some cases, continuing to allow properties to be used residentially makes sense. But by and large, the 98 plan that calls for this to be an industrial area still makes sense. The one thing that the planning commission recommended was to, like with the Northridge West area, identify more of a light industrial and planned unit-style industrial development where you're close to some residential property. Because again, on the west side of Walker Avenue, you have some long-established residences and one kind of commercial site, but mostly residences who have been there a long time, and you want to be sensitive to how this use interfaces with, with how they use their land. And so, that means developing it in a planned unit style of growth that thinks about things strategically. So, that's really the only land use, future land use map update in this subplan recommendation.
Hey, Dan, can you go back to that slide? I just had a question. What, I can't remember what the U-M-U-R-C designation, what does that stand for?
Yeah, and that's a good question. So, and you'll also see a sharp black line just to the south of that purple color on this screen, where that's been kind of isolated. So, U-M-U-R-C is Urban Mixed Use Redevelopment Core.
I wouldn't have guessed that.
Okay.
That is a future land use designation that was assigned with the '07 South Alpine Future Land Use Plan. So, when we looked at this, and this was kind of a late decision on my part, we want to make sure that, that is mostly becoming the Weller site. And that's a place where there's a lot of discussion about how the zoning does or does not tie in with the master plan, kind of one-for-one. Last year, when that project was being reviewed, there are design treatments that you can use to make that more of an urban mixed-use type of site, but we'll see how that comes together. But that fronts on Alpine, so I kind of interpreted that what we're looking at here is really the properties that front on these problematic streets, kind of between Alpine and Walker. That's why that was kind of sectioned off and not really reanalyzed as part of this future land use plan.
And the S-R, SCRC?
Let's see. SCRC, suburban, commercial, retail.
So, that's the Meyer, basically, right? And then the rest of the retail along the Alpine corridor?
So, I think I kind of went through all the big recommendations. There are implementation items that I don't know if I mentioned just now, but they are in the report. So, I'm glad to talk about any of those or how this plan came together. But one of the big outcomes of this plan is let's plan strategically and comprehensively, especially on the old Tric Mine site, but let's remove the Klute Street as an essential connection and look at other potential options for connections in the future.
Yeah, this area reminds me of, like, in general, if you had to, if I had to come up with a phrase, it'd be like, uh, legacy usage, where you might have an idea on what you might want to change it to, but there's topographical compaction, just natural features that make other uses probably going to be challenging. And I think that, you know, the, the Weller reuse of that is, is, is a good example of that. And as we see Betts continue to expand and even other folks along Panel Street, they'll, they are continuing to invest and bring jobs, but it's still a heavy industrial. And at the same time, it's, it's got that, maybe not natural break, but the railroad bridge, I mean, I heard many residents say, "Well, we, we like that low bridge because it keeps people out, keeps trucks out," and there's a, there's a natural feature to it. So, it's like, but at the same time, that's probably not your call anyways. Once you have to redo that, there are probably some standards that says you can't maintain a low bridge like that. But at the same time, I think we see BISL continue to evolve, and 30 years ago, that was steel stamping manufacturing, then it evolved into plastic injection molding. Now, it's research and chemistry and marketing. But it's still a great employer, and it still fits that area and the community. So, I, I think it's good work.
Can you go back to, I'll even take it a little bit further north. I, I like the fact that, that we have the foresight now, we're starting to think ahead of, of what the what-ifs, but if we start even going a little bit further north up into Northridge, I mean, there is going to be an impact from here, people going, trying to get up into the, into the park up there with all the, the plan development. And the fact that we can remove some of that gridlock traffic that's going to inevitably come from Alpine and put it onto where if we can make that where, think back to that first slide, if we can stretch that out to the old rail bed, if you will. I forgot the name of it, the one, yep. So, actually go one more, Dan, went forward, one more. Actually, I think it was... Yeah, this one right here, the option one. So, when I, when I look at that, you know, the, the vision that I have is in looking at your, at the design work here, is the potential, you're going to have traffic going up to Northridge. And if we, if can help, again, mitigate some of that from Alpine over to here without taking it through any neighborhoods or the like, then I think we've accomplished a couple of things there. So, I, I like the, again, I like the forward thinking here and continuing to, to look anxiously to see what, what's going to be our best option here.
Yeah, a lot of good work has gone into this, so thanks to you and your team for doing that.
One thing also to kind of piggyback on those comments, this does not preclude a Klute Street connection. It just removes it as an essential connection. So, there's still a possibility that if the right stakeholders are looking at their sites over time, that could still be pieced together, but it's not.
And that could change at some point, as we know, but for right now, it's probably not a viable option. Could change next month, so.
Good. Anyone else? Comments, questions?
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Process from here, if you do adopt the draft plan, just like with the Sub 1A, we'll have a 63-day review period, and then we'll come back to a final recommendation for adoption by the planning commission and you folks.
So, Frank, you're going to look for a motion to accept this then tonight? Is that correct?
The resolution to distribute the draft plan.
Okay.
Yes.
This one?
Yeah, that's conceptual, if the opportunity arises.
Sorry, I had to step out, but, okay.
So, Dan, we're still on the same subject matter, and the question was, is, you know, after going through this, to adapt the resolution for distribution? And we're just wrapping up questions, so if you had any questions for Dan?
So, if we approve the plan to go along the railroad grade and then come out to Walker, will that happen then in the future? How would that, you know, like, we talked about all these other plans, and then all of a sudden, this one comes in with a plan and doesn't want it, and this one can, can we make it stick, I guess?
This removes all terminology of essential connections, but it makes a series of strong recommendations that there is some form of connection. So, but what we have as specific implementation items in this plan are things like as, as the kind of Betts, Betts campus redevelops, that landowners set aside or be encouraged to set aside rights-of-way easements to kind of piece together the road network. It's not a guarantee that there will be a road along the old rail bed. It's just a recommendation that we keep those options open and integrate that kind of thinking into the site plan reviews.
Recognizing this is a 20-year-plus plan.
Okay. Yep. To get something through there is, is something that's really, in my opinion, it's really needed down there, and it's, you know, it's filling in and filling up, you know? So, it's, it's something that we gotta, we gotta keep moving on.
Any other comments or questions?
As far as the railroad bridge, making it single lane, I mean, you want speed bumps places, but that's the best speed bump we got in the city.
Yeah, it sure is.
But, yeah, I know that it's going to come a day when it's going to not be that way.
You know the phrase, "The path of least resistance"? This is the path of most resistance. This is the path of most resistance.
So, no, I'd like to see it pursued. I don't know which slide you had there, but it showed that, but, yeah. Now, the one is, we go back to, okay, this one. And the other one that shows, that's going to be the Betts Foundry, that's their private street going through, correct?
That's right.
Okay. No, I'd like to see that. You looking for a motion? I'd make the motion that we move forward with this, and we gotta do, you know, like I say, keep moving forward on it.
So, your motion by Kent, support?
Yeah, do you support it?
Support by Kerry. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, everybody.
Next item on our agenda is Resolution 18-492. This is compliance and provision of Public Act 152, 2011, city's right to exempt itself from requirements of the act. Daryl?
Yep, this is one we've been fortunate to bring to you the last several years regarding our healthcare renewal and opting out of the requirements of PA 152 of 2011, which requires a 20% contribution. And we've been fortunate enough to allow our employees to pay 15%. And again, this year, we've had very favorable healthcare renewal, basically flat. So, we are recommending to just keep everything status quo and the same this year for the employees going, or into next calendar year. So, to do so requires the commission's action on exempting itself from this requirement, so.
Okay.
I'll make motion to approve that.
Motion by Kent?
I'll support.
Gruders? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Next item is, this is ordinance. This is 18-643, second reading to amend Section 94-37 regarding the Northridge Drive Precise Platte. Here we call, this was putting in place where that roadway will continue in the future at some point in time. Second reading, look for a motion.
Make that motion.
Motion by Deshane?
Support.
Support by Kerry. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Now, I'd like to have the clerk take, or I guess we, first of all, need a motion to go into closed session. This is for the purpose of discussing the POAM contract, and we'll take, we'll look for a motion first on that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kerry?
Support.
Support by Gruders. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. And then you need to make a roll, take a roll call for vote here on this, clerk?
By Kent? Yes. Mayor Heisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerry?
Yes.
Commissioner Deshane?
Yes.
And Commissioner Gruders?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. Going to close session. Next item on our agenda is, we have the police POAM union negotiation contract, which we just discussed. We'll look for a motion and support of that.
Do you have to make that motion?
Motion by Kerry?
I'll support.
Support by Gruders. Any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you to our, the leadership, management, the police department, and everyone for making this happen. Feels like it's a good contract, and I'm happy to see this moving forward. So, a motion and support, no other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda, other public comment. Seeing no one else from the public, we'll move into commissioner and city manager comments. Can you start with the clerk?
I have nothing.
Nothing. Commissioner Kerry?
I had a dispatch authority meeting this morning, and I can't remember, we were done in like 20 minutes or so, and it just, it's, in almost the years serving on the committee, we've gone, I feel like we have better policy, better framework in place, we have better financial reports and controlling in place that we all understand, and the committees are supposed to do the work when you get to the big meetings, and they go smooth. So, making a lot of progress. They did, I had not shared this with our chief chef, but they look to be, as far as the go-live date, so to speak, Motorola is now sharing it could be a little bit past next fall, which was the last update that we had. So, that's a potential. They just gave us the heads-up, which means it very likely would happen, so outside of that, nothing.
Next fall? A year from now?
Next fall, and that date's moved a little bit, just maybe a month or two past that, and that's from the Motorola folks.
So, they had a boat to collect money for this, and we're paying for a product we haven't gotten. Can we, can we?
Amen. Yep.
Make a motion to exempt and stop that payment to, so, why am I paying for an elephant when I don't have an elephant?
So, the equipment, so, at this point, the, one of the things that we've put, we have a new finance committee, and there's been some very stringent controls put in place with not only the request, the expenditures, but it's also the reporting aspect, what's going where, what money's coming from what bucket. And there was some ambiguity there before, and I'll share some of the notes with the group here. But they, they have been collecting on the millage, the equipment, a lot of the equipment has been purchased, is sitting in storage, is ready to go. They've started to test. There's been a tower or two incident, the one up by Cedar. I think there was some overload, so that made that tower not feasible. So, they had to go to another option for that north end beyond the honor camp. And so, there's been some moving parts, but I really felt, coming out of the meeting this morning, this is probably, you know, a good eight to nine months of some pretty heavy lifting to get things in a better spot. I think we're on a very defined timeline now, and there's accountability, and it's accountability with Motorola, it's accountability with the county, the city of Grand Rapids as well. So, we're, I think we're in a good spot. Matter of fact, one of the motions made this morning was placement towers downtown in Grand Rapids on the existing public safety building there. So, that's something new. So, there'd be some new towers put there as well.
So, I guess when I look at, I'm following, trying to follow the money trail, and I'm going, we're paying money for this service, and we don't have the service. And the money was, in my understanding, it was to build it, and it was going to cover everything. And so, operation of this, we're not, we don't, we don't have operational fees because we're not operating. So, where's all that money going?
But there was capital. There was a lot of capital that went into the equipment, and it wasn't like when the voters approved the millage that that meant it would be turned on tomorrow. All the planning and everything, they had to go into it. And I think admittedly, from the meetings that I've heard and discussions I've been a part of, there were some things that didn't go quite exactly as planned, but it sounds like with some new personnel there, that they're back on track. And I'm really glad to hear that there are defined timelines because this is the first that I've heard that. It's been always a little bit of this, you know, ghosted date out there.
It was a bigger moving target before, right.
It was nebulous, right? So, I think, I feel like that at least it's on target now, and to see some timelines, that means a lot.
You know, I just, you know, it's like Motorola is the only company we can deal with and everything, and it's like, you know, it's, you know, like I say, you follow the money trail, you might find a lot of, I don't know. It just doesn't sound right to me to...
Well, I, but to the point, absolutely right. But the, I'll call it the, I think the structure, the people that are leading this are much different than they were eight, nine months ago, completely different for the better. I know today, Ottawa County was, is delayed too now, so it's not just, you know, another month or two. I mean, so, you're at the whim a little bit of somebody like a Motorola, so they're delayed, and I don't know all the full details, but I, you know, it's a lot of moving parts there. But I can finally, if you asked me even four or five months ago, could I see a light at the end of the tunnel, the answer is no. I can finally see on behalf of all of us, there is a light at the end of the tunnel. We know where the money's going, we know where it's at, what the budget looks like. Again, I think that there was probably not as much structure as we would have wanted over the, maybe a year ago, that exists now.
So, it's...
We've also changed an executive director. We didn't have a project manager before. So, those are all things that we've put into place.
So, the state went to the 800-megahertz system and everything. So, wouldn't that give everybody, Motorola, whoever, kind of a, you know, you can look at this, this doesn't, here's the cost, here's what you gotta do, like placing the towers and whatnot. So, there's a tower in Rockford at the state police post and different things that, I guess, you can't share towers?
I think there's, when you bring up a good point, I think when you get to, I'll walk cautiously in this one, I think when you get to the state level, your span of control probably is a lot greater than what they are at the local level. So, their ability to do things as they see, deemed in the best interests of public safety, and this is where this should go, I think there's a lot more ability to get those things done at that level than there is probably at the local. That might be why. And they also had a jumpstart on us too, from that perspective.
Okay.
No, great questions. I'll just keep everybody updated as we're, you know, as we continue to go through, but I really feel good that we're, yeah, we've been collecting this for a while now, but there's been a lot of capital equipment purchased. The tower leases, we're down to just a couple now, and we have one area remain nameless. It's a little troublesome, but we'll get through that soon enough.
Thank you.
Yep.
Gruders?
Nothing for me.
Deshane?
Nope, I'm good.
I'm good.
Mr. Wash?
Anything for me?
City manager?
Nope. Thanks for all your support on all our items this afternoon and evening. And just a congratulations to Steve, you all know, but he won the rodeo, so he's not here to get his accolades, but we'll get him at the next meeting. And then I thought that was really good discussion from the pickleball folks, and I think, I think there's some, you know, good alternatives we can help them out with in the next budget year, if not before.
Yeah. It seems like a relatively inexpensive expenditure for a group that has a lot of enthusiasm. If they got this many people out there, that usually means there's at least three or four people for every one that's here, so that's great.
Don't want to squash that. And I think there's, probably easily, we can do one of the courts behind city hall there, and then if stuff works out with Kenowa, that might be another alternative to even get more, so.
Yep.
It's kind of on the horizon as well.
It's like there's a demand.
Yeah. For every tennis court, it's eight pickleball courts, right?
Yeah.
Four.
Four.
Can I just add one thing? Last week, I went to the groundbreaking for the Boy Scouts camp. It's really cool. They, you know, have been raising money for a couple of years, and to see the community come together for that project, stuck in an industrial area, unless you knew it was there, you would never know that it's going to be there. But what's really cool is that it's a, it's a place that's going to have camping, hiking, and other stuff, 36 acres, 10 minutes from downtown Grand Rapids. So, a place for young men and women, and also community to come together. They said that they're going to have it available for schools, for retreats, and other kind of things. So, it's a really great community event, probably to have it in Walker, so I was glad to participate in that. So, with that, just look for a motion to adjourn.
The motion?
Motion by Kerry?
Support.
Support. If you have any say aye?
Aye.
All the same sign. We're adjourned. Good evening.
Oh, good. I was worried.
Oh, that's good. I'll find out more.
So, what do they got to...